You know, I certainly get one.
I usually do it after someone I type on.
It's a rush.
Yeah.
But sometimes.
That week was busy.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 6th meeting of the Ames Community School District Board of Directors. I will call our meeting to order and entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So moved?
Second.
Moved by Winfrey, seconded by Becker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes 6-0. And we will now all together read our purpose statement. We invite anyone in the audience who would like to join us. The Ames Community School District commits to equity and access that empowers every individual to reach their full personal and educational potential. And our first agenda item tonight is our celebrations and recognitions, beginning with the Ames High Science Bowl, and we'll turn it over to Director Smith.
This is really exciting. It really is my honor to be able to present this Science Bowl team and Ms. Sullivan here as well. So the Science Bowl team, they've been competing for the last three years virtually. And they truly have been and are one of the best Science Bowl teams in the nation. So they had a weekend or a competition a couple of weekends ago, and they were one of the eight national Science Bowl teams that competed for the national championship. And after three years of competing virtually, they will be on their way to Washington DC as one of those eight teams to go to Washington DC. And so it really is exciting. And so I want to turn it over to Ms. Sullivan, who leads this fabulous team.
I would say more like supervisors. They do all the work. I'm gonna let them introduce themselves.
I'm Abi Amaluru. I'm a sophomore at Ames High School, and I've competed in National Science Bowl for three years.
I'm Jacob Stevens. I'm a senior, and I've competed in National Science Bowl for seven years.
I'm David Dong. I'm a junior, and I've competed for one.
Hi, I'm Rishab Swami, and I've competed for seven years, and I'm a senior.
I'm Natus Naika. I'm a senior and have competed for six years.
Yes, and to tell a little more about the story, our three seniors here narrowly, narrowly earned second place their first year in the competition. Here at Ames Lab is where the competition takes place, and it's sponsored by the Department of Energy. Narrowly, and then their next year, they came back. And that was the year that I started to supervise them, and they came back with, you know, strong. They were gonna, and we won, and we had like the itinerary to go Washington DC because every year the regional finals, which ends up being all of Iowa, gets to go to DC. And then, we all know what happened, right? Their sophomore year, and then it turned into a virtual competition, and they claim that it's a competition like no other. And it really has been a competition like no other. So for the last two years, it hasn't even been like buzzers and competing against other students. So they have the buzzers, they're ready to practice for DC on July 8th. And again, we should all be so proud of the hard work and dedication they have done all of this. They practice, they research, they study, they find other teams to compete against. And I'd like to share as well that the legacy they leave to Ames High Sciences, they've earned over $4,000 for our science department in the last two years in competition. So that was part of the switch for NSB, is instead of having everyone go to DC, they started to hand out some prize money. So we should all be very proud of them, and please join me in congratulating them on their future. Thank you very much.
So before everyone leaves, I do want to provide the board an opportunity, opportunity to say anything.
Well, you know, I have watched some of you over the past six or seven years that you've been competing in Science Bowl, or I'm sorry. And you have done an amazing job. You have represented Ames so well throughout all of the different challenges with COVID and the switch between the virtual and in-person, and we are all very proud of you. And our next celebration is our Ames High Track and Field State Champions.
Well, if you want to know what a state champion looks like, to my left here, so this is Cameron Moon. So, you know, in athletics, everything works through seasons, and so as one season kind of moves into the next, Cameron here was part of the 4x200 Track and Field Team who narrowly won the state championship. It was a highly competitive field this year, and along with the three other athletes, Ireland Buss, Elena Deardorff, and Ellie Lynch, they won the 4x200 meter relay. So it really is, it was really wonderful to watch. I always loved state track. I always have gone for years and years. I didn't have an opportunity to go this year, but it really is an event like no other with both the boys and girls side competing, and they have tens of thousands of people that attend every year. So it really is a lot of fun. So as one season moves into the next, a couple of her 4x200 meter teammates are actually playing softball tonight, you know? So we were trying to find a date where we can make this work, and tonight seemed like the best fit. I know Coach Douglas was hoping to be here as well, and so I want to go over a couple of the things. Actually, before that, Cameron, do you want to say anything? Talk to me about what like what your next, what you're doing this summer, because we talked about this a little bit before you came on.
This summer, we've been training a lot just coming into this season. Next season, we're really excited though, because a lot of our team is like underclassmen. We had a few seniors that graduated this year, but next year, we're really excited to just compete like, especially against like all the Des Moines teams that have big numbers, but like we really feel like next year we can compete well. We're going for a state team championship next year. That's our goal. Yeah, so this summer, we'll just be training, doing workouts. We're also excited because we have a new indoor track that hopefully we'll get to use this winter, because this season was really cold, so.
Yeah, this season, this was rough on the spring sports this season. So a couple of other stats, just to go off of what Cameron said, so on the girl's side, they did place sixth overall with 45 points, but they are returning 84% of those points going into next year. And the difference between third place and ninth place as a team was just two points. So as a team, everyone was right there. Won't make Cameron stand up here with me, but I do have a couple of the things that we did want to kind of go over. On the boy's side, Corey Phillips, he was also hoping to be here. You'll remember Corey was here on the state basketball team as well. So he threw discus this season and recorded a new score record of 195 feet, bested the previous school record, and it also ranked seventh all time on the Iowa list, which is really cool. And so to round out the girl's side, they qualified in 16 different events, which is a really high number. So in addition to the 4x200, the 4x800 got second place. They scored points. The distance medley scored points, shot put, 4x100 meter relay, 4x400 meter relay. I know Elisa has a personal connection to the Track and Field Team with her daughter Ally also scoring points in the 100 meter hurdles and 400, or 400 meter hurdles. So it really was a fun season to watch, and anyone who keeps track of Ames High Athletics, if you're on Twitter, I would encourage you to follow that account. Honestly, it's where I get a lot of my information. So it really is fun to watch. So Cameron, thank you for being here.
And I think since we have a board member who is a particular fan of Track and Field, Elisa, is there anything that you would like to say?
I would just say congrats to the athletes. I think they're all, they represent the school district really well, like so many of our teams do. So a great atmosphere, lots of fun, and I know they're all looking forward to next year.
Well, thank you all for being here tonight. We really appreciate it. Such a great way to start our meeting. Okay, we will go ahead and move into our discussion items. And our first discussion item is our board committee update, and we only have one this evening scheduled, which is the policy committee. So Director Winfrey.
Yes, we met on May 18th and discussed quite a few policies as usual. And many of these are updates, IASB recommendations, and kind of consistency in formatting. A few that I wanted to mention, since we spent a little more time talking about them, were the teaching to the academic freedom policy, which is, hang on, I've got them all open. 603.9, Paula's like. And we had discussed this, according to my notes, that we, this is IASB's recommendation after House File 802. It uses language of academic freedom to talk about what teachers can do and how it should be tied to our mission and vision and curricular goals. I think that we had some discussion about some of the language and maybe the title of it, whether we liked academic freedom or not. And I don't know if Paula was gonna look at any more of that or what we landed on, but.
We did have the conversation about maybe there's a better name for it, but no one could come up with one. So we left it as IASB titled it.
And I guess I just jumped ahead into policies for discussion, so. It's always hard to do the COVID committee update and then this, right? So that was one. If you have any questions, we can discuss. I think we were all happy with the way the language landed. We just, I didn't come up with a better title either, so.
So just real quick, we'll see if anyone had anything else for board committee updates.
Oh, yes.
Okay, and then we can open the discussion on the policies for discussion if anyone wants to comment on any of these, including the academic freedom policy.
Awesome. Okay. Okay, I think we talked some about the student health services policy as well, but I don't know. I think our discussion, we landed on language we were okay with, if I'm remembering correctly. I apologize, the minutes aren't posted. That was my bad. I totally forgot to send them, so if you don't have the minutes, that's why.
We will get them posted very quickly.
But yeah, that, my notes were we were okay with where we landed with that, but we did discuss that a bit to make sure we were happy with it. Okay?
Awesome. I just realized that we did not collect our public forum. Alan, would you mind running over and collecting any signups? Make sure we didn't have anybody signed up under policies for discussion. I don't think we do. Nothing? Okay, very good. Then we will go ahead and move on to our teaching and learning updates, and we'll turn it over to Director Erin Miller. Oh, and I guess I should say that the item is materials adoption for secondary social studies.
Well, good evening. Sorry, sometimes it's easier to drive the laptops. I appreciate your patience. So this is a secondary social studies review. You saw a bit of it the last time, a month ago or so, when we talked about the AP courses, so we have some additional course recommendations here. So one thing that I think I wanted to start with, we talked last time about kind of the three lenses we look through when we're doing a curriculum review. So we talked about the standards, the best practices in the discipline area, and then equity rubric, right? Those are the things we look at. And so I just lost the whole screen. There, one moment. I'll try to break it again. Okay, so one of the things we want to talk about is there's an interesting intersection in social studies between the best practices in the genre and the standards that the state has adopted. So one of the changes in social studies, you may remember, at least I remember, social studies being a significant memory challenge for me on what, you know, who did what on what date, and there was a lot of matching and things like that, right? In our maybe past social studies experiences. But since then, we've learned that that might not be the best way to have things stick, because over the time, if you read social studies articles from teachers, you know, even back as early, I was listening to a professor talk who was saying, even in the 50s, folks would complain that their students just didn't remember the dates very well. And so it might be that the memorization wasn't helping kids hold on to the context and really think about causes and effects and different things in social studies. And so they have shifted to more of an inquiry approach to social studies. And so Iowa has as well. The work in Iowa was based on the C3 framework, which was in partnership with the National Social, National Council of Social Studies teachers. And they really go through four big areas. So the very first thing is the green stem, right? So that's the questioning stem, really writing and trying to answer compelling questions, and then brainstorming supporting questions to really think about things like, the question might be, you know, what really is freedom? What does it mean to be free? And there are different age-appropriate ways to answer that question, right? And thinking about other questions. So the goal is, over the course of the progression from K to 12 to enable students with the ability to not only answer complex questions, but really start to ask their own complex questions. The next section, the purple section there, represents the content inquiries. So how do you think like a historian or a geographer or a social scientist? And that's where the teachers really use their content area expertise to think about what are those content area pieces that we need to engage with. The next section, the blue section there, is about evidence. So instead of just taking a traditional social studies textbook, but that might be one or a group of writers' opinions about things, they really want to have students look at primary sources. They use primary sources very broadly to cover a range of media, right? So it might be looking at somebody's journal entry, might be looking at a video, might be looking at a picture, an image, right? So there's lots of different primary sources that they ask kids to engage with, and then to draw their own conclusions about the answer to the question from those primary sources, right? So really for the kids to create the meaning is the essential part. So the last section there talks about different ways that we might communicate those conclusions and that we might take action. So the action might look like affecting your classroom level at the elementary level, all the way up to affecting, you know, maybe your school level, the middle school level, to even the broader world, our community at the high school level. So again, all of these skills, they kind of take these four areas and progress them. So the state of Iowa made these intentional instructional shifts as they wrote the new standards. So you will see standards that are inquiry standards for each grade level. If you go onto the website and look at those grade level standards, for kindergarten, it might be that they understand the questions, right? At high school, it's writing your own questions. So I kind of talked about that range, so you'll see those. It also looks different as to whether you're exploring primary sources that the teacher found for you, or whether by high school, you're finding your own primary sources, right? So again, it's that progression and continuum. So this is a pretty big shift in social studies instruction that the state has adopted. And our teachers have been negotiating and trying to figure out how do we do this well, pretty much on their own. And so our goal tonight is to, or our goal during this process, was to see if there were resources out there that could make their job a little bit easier and provide them some support. So that kind of leads us into like the process for the last few years has really been the teachers doing a lot of the heavy lifting, engaging in the learning around the standards. They've been piloting inquiry models, trying to create that best practices, what do we believe is best for our students here in Ames, and trying to bundling those standards into those inquiry models. So this year, we've really tried to figure out what materials might best help them, or, and they, we were able to use sort of a different screening model. So the challenge with social studies, when you're thinking about this inquiry cycle, is a traditional textbook is gonna make your job harder, because it doesn't provide you things that are bundled around a question, right? A lot of times, they might be chronological, they're just providing facts, and so it's not helping your job. So our challenge was to figure out, are there any companies producing anything that is like an inquiry model? And I was a little heartened to see that there were. I really expected to go into it and thinking like, I'm not gonna be able to find anything. I'm a little stressed for them, but we did find some things. And we were able to then look at the content standards to see what align, and our equity rubric to see are these materials, things that would help move our mission forward. And so I'm happy to report that we did find some things. At the middle school level, the state of Iowa has determined the theme for each level that guides a lot of the content standards. The sixth grade theme is world, regions, and cultures. The seventh grade theme is contemporary global studies. The eighth grade theme is US history and civic ideals, so the very beginnings of the country. The great news is, we found materials that align well to the sixth grade standards. We also found materials that align well to the eighth grade standards. The sad news is, because Iowa wrote our own content level standards, there's not a great resource that would function holistically at the seventh grade level. So we're still working through some things with the seventh grade team of teachers, but we are ready to make a recommendation for sixth and eighth grade. So traditionally, we like to see something like with the middle school, materials span a whole grade range or building, and that's not gonna be possible to meet our goals with that for social studies. Ninth grade, the state of Iowa did not specify by grade level, so they just said, here's all the things you have to teach in high school. So that can be a daunting task. The social studies teachers at the high school did a great job of digging into those content standards and saying, here are the classes we already teach. We think these things will go well here. Here's what we need to add. So you may remember, a couple of years ago, they added the requirement that kids either take soc or psych in order to hit the social sciences standards. And so we've been looking with them to say, okay, what are their materials or things that you need to be able to better teach your courses? So that's where some of our AP materials came from previously. And then our ninth grade world studies team said, yes, let's look at some things. So we've been looking with them. Interestingly, the sixth, eighth, and ninth grade teachers are all recommending materials by the same company. So that's our presentation tonight, and why, if you wondered, gosh, that's a weird sequence of courses, that's sort of how it came to be that we're making that recommendation. Oh, this was the required courses. I apologize. We have that there, and the ninth grade one is the one we're recommending for. So I'll go through, I have a couple of slides for, that will highlight some different pieces for sixth grade, eighth grade, and ninth grade. So you can kind of see the progression there. The nice thing about this particular company is called TCI, so it's a teacher-created company. Teachers wrote all the lesson plans and found all the things and put them together. It's not your traditional textbook, so it doesn't have, it does have a set of materials, a text that students can use, but a lot of it is made up of that inquiry cycle, right? So their units are organized by a big question. It has primary sources embedded in it that students can explore. And there's lots of different resources and kind of hands-on things that kids can engage with. So the sixth grade found that two programs are gonna work pretty well. Their primary resource is gonna be History Alive: The Ancient World, or that's what we're proposing. And sixth grade, because they have a heavy geography influence, will be able to use Geography Alive: Regions and Peoples to kind of supplement that. We also, when you buy TCI's materials, you get access as a teacher to any resources that they have in their middle school programming. So they will be able to pull from both without us having to buy an additional digital subscription. They'll be able to pull from those two. There's a link there that gives you kind of a snapshot of the overview. It gives you each unit and what the big question is and what some of the primary resources are. So you can, you can kind of look at those things. And this is kind of what I've been talking about, is TCI's framework around that inquiry model, right? So it starts with a question. They have videos and other interactive pieces that kids can explore. They have some interesting access online, but they also are supposed to integrate with Google Classroom, so it should help with our systems. They have some assessments and things for students. So that's kind of the sixth grade. Eighth grade, they have a series called The United States Through Industrialism, which again aligns nicely to those content standards that the state has set out for those. And again, there's a link on there that you can look through standard by standard for that. And I just gave you kind of a snapshot again that talks about those essential questions, some examples of how they integrate primary sources and other things that they do so that the kids really are creating, are using these different things to create their own answers to these questions. Then the last one on there is ninth grade, which is the History Alive: World Connections, and this is the high school suite. And so they have, I think another unique thing about TCI when we were looking at social studies is they really do talk about wide variety of cultures and examples. So the equity rubric score was also relatively high for this program, because there's lots of different perspectives that are centered in the text. So again, same kind of structure on these sites for ninth grade. Another thing I guess I'll say about the components is because all of the readings that students do are online and can be pushed out through Google Classroom and Google Drive, we can use all of our accessibility tools, and they have Spanish versions of the texts already translated. We can use other translation services that we have at the district for other languages. So the team was really, or I was really impressed, and I think the team was impressed too, about all the different differentiations that we can have to support our students that take advantage of our existing systems. So that is a really high-level overview of the program. I'm happy to answer questions. And I think I saw a couple of teachers in the back that would probably be willing to answer if you had a specific question for them as well.
So I like this way of thinking, because I grew up in the stage where it was memorization and very little ability to connect, right? From one something to, but I do know that kids develop intellectually at different speeds, and some of these open-ended questions or exploration, things that develop that require critical thinking are more difficult for some than others, especially, you know, if they have any learning disabilities or things like that. So are there resources to help those kids that are struggling with some of these open-ended concepts? Resources other than the book that they, that the teachers can direct them to or help parents help their kids?
They do have a parent component, so they have, this program has like a, here's what's coming, like a preview with each unit that we can send home to help support. I think there's things built into this program, and I also think that's the beauty of kind of the way the state has laid out these standards, is that if at the high school level, we're not yet able to ask our own question, that's something we need support with, right? We know that we can scaffold and think back to the previous year's standard potentially as a starting place, right? To think about, okay, we're not ready to ask our own question, we might be ready to answer one and write our own compelling questions. And then what scaffolds do I need in place to help my student ask their own question? The other, I think that is the end of the 12th grade year expectation. So the ninth grade material still will have support for the teachers, and here's some questions you might think about. Here's the, here's a bank of questions, or here's different answers. I think what I like about this too is when I was looking through it, there's lots of different ways of, it honors different ways of knowing or answering questions. There's not just one right way necessarily to do things.
The other thing I often hear from my own children is that when everything's online, sometimes they feel they don't have the support they need to review information. They'll say, I don't know where to find the answer. I don't know where to look. And I did hear you say that they'll have access to things that are pushed out through Google Classroom. Are there, what other avenues do they have to reread things or have access to some of this content?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm glad you add, you asked. What I forgot to say is they also do have a traditional textbook. So we are intending to purchase a little bit more than a classroom set, so teachers will have that available for students to check out or to potentially take. If we had a student that really needed to take one home, you know, we could do that. We also know that, you know, this is the first year of piloting. Next year will be the first year they're working with it. So we may find the need to purchase additional copies as we go, but we're gonna start with about 40 per teacher, which is, like I said, a little bit more than a classroom set. So there'll be some other options.
Thanks.
Yeah.
One question I had as you were describing it, more generally, kind of what roadblocks or challenges might there be in the way of doing this? And one I kind of heard you say is, this is kind of new for the teachers, and they've been coming up with these standards. Are they ready to hit the ground running on that, or do we have professional development that's going into that?
Yeah, TC, yep, that's a good question. TCI has a lot of different ways to do professional development with the teachers. So when, should this get approved next time, then we will work with the teachers to say, okay, here's, here's all. okay, here's, here's all the options. What would you like? I think to your question, we may, we probably won't be able to implement every inquiry cycle in one year that we're kind of taking a multi-year implementation approach so that they feel like they have space to try things out and that there's not the pressure to get through every unit because with any set of materials, we get way more than we're able to do in a year. So really giving them permission to slow down and go as deep as they need to in order to help students meet those goals.
And then as a parent, I think I'd reflect on something Michelle said. Some of the online texts I've seen in the past with my own kids, it's like literally just the textbook online. It looks like this might be more interactive and have multimedia. So I would love to make sure that we're looking for that as we go forward. Because I think one thing we've learned coming out of the pandemic is a lot of kids would be doing stuff online. And I think it's important, it's not just accessible online, but it's able to be learned well online.
Yeah, so that's something we're going to have to play around with. So TCI has its own like platform and there's text boxes that kids can type right into or there, so it's, it's more interactive than a textbook, right? Like it has lesson bases online. It has slide ducks that can be either pushed out or kids can, you know, have a copy, do some editing. So we'll have to, we don't know the tools, I would say, well enough to know totally all the answers to your questions, but there are some maps they can manipulate and different things like that that are digital. But then there's also the option for printed copies of some of those things. So I think it's going to be an interesting challenge to figure out, you know, what's going to work really well online. I know Michelle's back there and I got to work with her and the sixth graders. And there's some sixth graders who are going to need some, some paper pencil types of things or lots of students probably beyond sixth grade who might need us to do some different things. And I think that's what, at least what I've seen is it has the ability to be pretty flexible. But we won't know that as well until we get into trying out some of the units a little bit more.
Just to clarify to you, you mentioned the, so the newer standards with the inquiry model. Now teachers are just kind of cobbling together their own.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, I'm glad you found something that seems to align so well.
Yes, me too.
Okay, thank you, Director Biller. And we did not have anyone from the public sign up to speak on the teaching and learning update. So we will move on to the facility subunit naming recommendation for the Ames High pool.
Thank you, Director Shields Cook. In your board package, you do have materials that have been summarized that also align with the changes that the board made in the board policy 801.5. This particular application is reviewed by the district staff and recommendation to name the pool within the auditorium at the new high school after Mr. Dan Flannery. And you will see some of his highlights in the materials that Director Schmidt pulled together. I would just like to highlight a few of those this evening. As you may know, his tenure span from 1998 through 2020. And in this time, his dual meet record was 140 and to 11 to 1. So amazing statistic. I believe, we believe it's unrivaled in the state. So it ranks second on Iowa's all-time list in that he won 18 state championships with the girls' team. Also, you will notice that in 2018, there were actually two state championships, one for the boys and for the girls. A couple other items that I would highlight would be in 2018, Mr. Flannery was named the recipient of the Iowa Girls High School Athletic Union's Golden Plaque of Distinction Award. And in '21, he was inducted into the Iowa High School Swim Coaches Association Hall of Fame. In the revised board policy, it outlined a process whereby recommendations could come to the district and for board consideration. And in those applications, we asked for what it is that individuals are asking to be named. And we also asked for written documentation about certification of character and community support. And then contribution, not only to our school district, but perhaps a city, state, or nation. We believe that this recommendation meets all of that criteria. And for those reasons, we have it on as a discussion item tonight. A recommendation for naming the pool, the Ames High Pool actually becoming the Dan Flannery Pool within the new high school. This is not an action item this evening. It is for discussion. And if we can ask, answer any other questions, I know Director Schmidt and I are prepared to do our best on those.
So the, I, I am highly supportive of this recommendation. The thing about Dan Flannery was not just his legacy of winning, but his legacy of inclusion, of including all swimmers, whether they were champions or not. And that all of the swimmers were treated equally in terms of cheering for their own small records. So even those kids who were last, the other swimmers would be cheering for them because that's what Dan created. And he gave a place for kids who may not have had any other place to go. And he was an amazing individual who touched many, many lives. And I think this is a small way to honor such an amazing human being.
It's very evident when you read all of the information, pardon me, in the application and the information that Eric put together for us, that it was beyond the championships. And I, and I really appreciate Michelle sharing that, but, but people in the application sharing that for those of us that did not, were not touched individually. But I know, having spoken to so many people in the community feeling so positive about the impact he made on kids' lives, not just while they were at Iowa State, or not just while they were at Ames, but as they moved on, whether to other institutions or into life. So I really appreciate the staff bringing forth this recommendation.
Other questions or comments from the board?
I guess comment, I'm fully supportive. So yeah, no real question. I guess one question. We'll be able to have it named, assuming we vote yes next time, which I think we will. We'll be able to have it named and have some sort of dedication ceremony early in the season, right, I would think. We'll get that scheduled. I think that would be great to invite all the people that signed because that's a lot of people.
If Director Schmidt is willing, maybe comment just on some tentative planning in the event that it may get approved of our community celebration.
Yeah, so Activities Director Fetters and I, we met with his wife, Jody, now several weeks ago, just to have a conversation about this, you know, this topic has, it really started shortly after he passed several years ago. And there's a variety of reasons for why it didn't come to the board sooner. And one of the things that we walked away from that meeting that she told us was that doing this now during this timing certainly felt much more like a celebration for her and her family than what it would have had we done this sooner. And so we did tentatively talk about, you know, this is step one. And then step two would be to have some type of dedication ceremony where we would bring people in. They would be able to, you know, speak to Dan and probably have a lot of tears along the way. But, but you know, that, that will be step two of our process.
Thank you. Well, we'll look forward to having this back on as an action item at the next meeting. Okay, and we did not have anyone sign up to speak under this discussion item either. So I will go ahead and open our public forum and read our statement on public comments. Residents of the district, students attending the district, parents or guardians of students attending the district, and district staff members may address the board about any topic relevant to the district, whether on the current agenda or not. Those who wish to speak must sign up at the beginning of the meeting. Speaker participation is limited to three minutes once per item. The views and opinions of citizens addressing the board do not necessarily reflect those of the board, district administration, or staff. Speakers are to remember that Iowa law prohibits the board from discussing specific employees, students, or their performance. Student speakers will state their name and school. Others will state their name and address. And we did not have anyone sign up to speak in person. We do have Sandra DeLuca signed up virtually. So if you give us just a second here, we have given you permission to speak.
Thank you so much. Sandra DeLuca here, permanent Ames address, 3520 Jewel Drive. I'm here representing, again, the hundreds of us supporting the efforts for the new Ames High Auditorium and theater space being named in honor of Wayne Hank Hansen. And as I'm only really the mouthpiece tonight for so many, I want to read to you from one of the many letters pouring in now from staff, from faculty, from other, other former students. We received a letter this week from Bud Legg, our esteemed former Ames High teacher, counselor, and associate principal. Really beautiful letter. This letter will accompany our documents, of course, pursuant to board policy. And I'm really honored to share some of Mr. Legg's words here tonight. So he says, he says, quote, "In my 25 years as a teaching colleague for five years, a guidance counselor for 11 years, and as an associate principal and athletic director for nine years, I got to know Mr. Hanson well, observing his love for his work, students, the high school, and mentoring particularly, as he built a superlative theater arts and drama program. After serving Hampton Iowa schools, he devoted 30 years of his life to Ames High School. As with many of his colleagues, he took the Ames High Ames High motto seriously. He was an individual of high integrity and character. He loved to challenge and stretch students, allowing them to grow and find a niche in their school. His pedagogy allowed him to ask students to rewrite assignments worthy of their skill set. He challenged students with their strengths as well as weaknesses. He had the insight to see the goodness of each student. It was not at all uncommon for him to help students before or after the school day. His personal approach to teaching and his infectious sense of humor allowed each student that he had to emerge better from the experience of interacting with him. He walked that walk throughout his professional life and you never had to worry that his students might wind up in the dean's office for discipline. It would have been a betrayal of their respect for him and the pursuit of excellence he carved into each lesson and drama production." I'm going to try to get through this without crying. For many students, he was that special teacher who made a difference in their lives and modeled the real commitment to their academics that was taught daily in his class or in his theater production, in his theater arts productions. It's no accident that several of them went on to be English, speech, theater arts, and drama teachers. It was an honor for me to evaluate his skills. In my years at Ames High School, I was part of efforts to name the high school library and learning center in honor of Dr. Ralph Farrar, as well as athletic venues and events in honor of coaches. Naming the Fine Arts Auditorium in the new high school to commemorate Hank's legacy fits well with past history. The best way to honor a person is to honor his successes as well as his students' successes and their joy of learning and growing. It is a legacy worth preserving." Okay, and then he goes on by closing and saying he's open to any questions regarding his comments. Thank you so much, Bud Legg, and thank you to the board tonight. Appreciate the time.
Thank you, Sandra. And we do not have anyone else sign up to speak this evening, so I will go ahead and close our public forum and move on to our consent agenda, and I will entertain a motion.
I approve the consent agenda as presented.
You missed the move.
I said, I move, I'm sorry. I move, but then I'll approve. Sorry, I move. We accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that. All right. Moved by Franzen, seconded by Winfrey. We don't have gifts to the district tonight. So all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Oppose, nay. Pass is six zero. All right, moving on to our action items. Our first action item is our policies for action. And I'll entertain a motion.
I move the board approved the policies as presented.
Second.
Okay, moved by Winfrey, seconded by Beerbomb. Discussion?
I have a question on two of them. It's the same question. 405.6 and 405.7 talks about the responsibility of the board and it kind of implies that we would have votes to approve these things. When actually we've just fully delegated it to the superintendent. I mean, I understand why the policy is, but it's not, it implies that there's something we do that we don't do.
You know, we had that conversation within the committee and we actually modified the language trying to make that more clear that you are affirming those recommendations. Ultimately, you really can take action there. But that's why we have more than one reading. If, if the board has discussion and wants to rescind it again, we certainly can keep considering.
Yeah, what I would say, Alan, is that the IASB model said that an employee's assignment is the responsibility and within the sole discretion of the board. And so we added the approving because that is what our role is, is to approve the recommendations that come to us.
They come to you on the personnel report each meeting. And I think it's important.
Yeah, that's a good point. Okay. Yeah. It's just consent, so we don't normal, I don't think of it normally as approval. It's just more notification in my mind, but yes.
It is, well, you're approving.
If you look at it, it's the responsibility of the superintendent. So we lay it out then later on to say that it's the superintendent's job to make that recommendation.
But thank you, because we did have that conversation. We had quite a lengthy conversation about it.
I guessed you did because it's a short policy, so that's probably the one that would take a while to talk about.
I would appreciate a little clarification on the first one, employee publication or creation of materials. We note that it's a new policy. I'm wondering the rationale behind changing it from what it was this year to next year, and then what impact might this have on teachers who, who creatively put together their own curriculums as they go to fill in gaps and to help their students to learn.
Oh, if you would, that would be great.
Again, we are trying to align heavily with the IASB recommendations. So that's where the new language comes from. Not having been in the district a long time, I can't speak very well to how much this might shift things. I certainly are open to consideration. But it does try to clarify that if employees are producing work as part of their role within the district, then there are restrictions around that. If they are totally independently creating materials, they have nothing to do with their work and it's not on school time, that's a different matter. But it's making this big distinction between those things that really happen because of their employment specific to the district.
Is, and are there, there's, there would be additional information, like an employee handbook about these sort of things too, right? This is for the administrative rules?
Yeah.
Yes, they're, they're, it's covered in more detail than certified stuff. So it's not new, the district is just a new policy.
So just to clarify, Kristin, because since I know not everyone can hear you without the microphone. You said it's not, so the language similar to this is already included in the employee handbook. It's just the official policy that's new?
Yes.
Okay.
If I remember right, this aligns to what, to some policy we have around technology. For example, that district staff can't use district resources to create products or to use for their, for personal employment or external employment, things like that. So it's kind of all aligned together in that way, I think.
So hypothetically, if a teacher were to retire from our school district and want to put together a publication or a book.
Textbook, yeah.
Yeah, textbook. And they gather materials based on what they taught with their own computer and their own. Is that restricted by this policy or how does that?
I'm going to look at Kristin.
Well, in theory, yes, the material, just like any employer, work that you perform for that employer belongs to the employer. And to to go afterwards, after you're done with that employment and make money off of what you did, while you, what you created while you worked for that, I mean, it belongs to the employer. So that was, that's the intent of this, is to keep that from happening.
I can answer my questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm trying to remember now. I think I did not. Okay, so it was moved by Franzen and seconded, no? Moved by Winfrey, seconded by Beerbomb. I didn't keep track of where I wrote down the motion, so sorry about that. Moved by Winfrey, seconded by Beerbomb to accept the policies for action. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. Pass is six zero. And I'll just make a comment. I think we're all a little off our game tonight, but three weeks off from a meeting, I feel a little off. All right. Our next item is the 2022-23 starting and substitute pay rates.
I move the board approve the starting and substitute rates of pay for 2022-23 as presented.
Second.
Moved by Becker, seconded by Beerbomb. Discussion?
How does this compare as a percentage to last year's rate?
I would defer to the mathematician at the table there.
So I don't have that math in my head, but I will tell you, if you recall, we did for the EAs, the educational assistance, we did $1.65 increase in the middle of the year, and we did $1.43 for everyone else. For, for the EA's continuing EA staff, we did 30 cents an hour starting July 1st, and we did 20 cents an hour for the starting wage. We tried to get, do a little bit of separation there so that you don't have a brand-new EA making the same as a one who's completed their first year. All of the other groups got a 2.8% salary increase, and the starting wage just went up 2%.
Okay, and that's, that's for the substitute teachers as well, so the 137.
Might be the, I'll let Chris answer the substitute.
We just added $2 to it, and I didn't even compute the rate.
Okay. So that's less than 2%. But we still are thinking that'll be competitive for next year to allow us to fill substitutes. I know we had a lot of trouble with substitutes this year, so that's why.
As far as we know now, we will try to keep an eye on that, and if we, if it, you know, we see, start seeing surrounding districts go up more, then we may be back with another recommendation.
And we did a mid-year increase on the sub-rate as well.
We did. A $7 increase, actually, mid-year.
Okay, so year over year, it's more like $9.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, it was moved by Becker, seconded by Beerbomb to approve the starting and substitute pay rates. All those in favor say aye. Oppose nay. Pass is six zero. Concurrent enrollment courses.
I move the board approve the courses recommended here as contracted courses with DMAC for concurrent enrollment, and that the board approve the measures recommended here as alternative ways students can show proficiency to take these courses.
This was actually on the table.
Oh, you're right.
So, oh, we did not.
I move we pick this item up off the table.
There we go. So now we're back to the original motion made by Ms. Franzen and Mr. Beerbomb. Okay. Thank you for that, Chris. So could we get an update from you, Dr. Hawkins, on this?
Happy to, happy to give you an update. Yep. So if you recall, there were four questions that the board had at our last conversation. I'm not sure, Dr. Vincent, have they received the physical copy of what I sent earlier? No, okay. Okay, I'm gonna read.
Ask your question again specifically.
So I apologize. I sent a concurrent enrollment update for the board a couple of days ago. Should I read? Would it be beneficial for me to read through this, or have they already had a chance to read this?
We have, we have a concurrent enrollment update for the board.
It's here in the agenda.
Then I'm gonna summarize rather than. Sorry, I apologize. The, the answer to the first question, can the board choose not to contract for concurrent enrollment course that DMAC offers? That is the same course as one offered as Iowa State University for the purposes of allowing this course to be taken via PSEO at the university. That was word for word what I asked. The person at our state below is her word-for-word answer. The quick version of those paragraphs is yes, you can, but that's not what they intend nor what they prefer. So what they would like us to do is to look at all of the courses that we offer on our high school campus, and then second, look at all of the courses that we want to extend offerings for on the DMAC campus, and consider both of those as our offerings. And then if a student wants to take a course that doesn't align with either of those, then they PSEO it. However, you have the authority as a board to determine course by course which of those courses are going to be extended. So if you can recall, last time, a committee had met several times to make recommendations to the board on what criteria should be used to identify those courses. An update to you is, since our last conversation and since seeking additional clarity from the state, the recommendation you have before you now is based on an analysis of all of the most commonly requested courses for PSEO since 2016. And any of those courses that since 2016 have had 10 or more requests to be PSEOed, they've been removed from the recommended list to be approved as contracted courses with DMAC. I can restate that if that doesn't make sense. So the list you have before you tonight is adjusted to remove courses that, from DMAC to reserve them as the ability to take them through PSEO. And which courses are those? They're the ones that are the most commonly requested over our analysis over the past five years.
So were they available at DMAC over the course of the last five years?
Yes.
And so were they just not offered by the district through DMAC? And that's why they requested most through this?
I'm gonna be really direct in my answer. Assuming that we were following the law really well, yes, the reason that they would be able to take them as PSEOs is because we hadn't approved them or they weren't offered by DMAC. I would present that there's a possibility that we just simply weren't on top of this law nor our processes. Because, I'm sorry, but it's a great lead into question number two. I apologize for interrupting you. Another question the board asked was, is there any way possible to set up choice for students? So they can choose what type of institution they want to go to, and the quick answer to that is no, we cannot. We can choose which courses we want to approve and not approve. If it's not approved to be taken through DMAC, then kids can take it through ISU. But if it is approved to be taken through DMAC, they cannot take it through ISU. It's one or the other, and that choice lies with the board, not with the student requesting the course. Sorry, I'll get back to your question. I apologize.
I've lost my question.
I'm, I'm.
I will think of it, though.
Is there, I assume there's a pattern or like maybe two or three common areas that those courses are that were popular, like for example, is it like math?
I would say Calculus II and Calculus III were some of the most commonly requested. I apologize that I'm not in a better position to be able to tell you exactly which courses have been the most commonly requested, but I I can tell you that at a later time if you want.
Yeah, I was just, to this question of why a student might have done that, aside from DMAC, I reflect back to what one student said of they were taking like biology, like maybe a sophomore-level biology class. That would maybe make sense why you would do that through ISU, is you'd have access to the labs and things like that.
Yeah, I, I think we, I think we heard clearly from our students who spoke last time that their perception was that the rigor, as well as the additional supports that they receive from ISU is why they advocated for, for those courses to be able to be taken through ISU. We still can set up a situation where students can take courses through ISU. We just can't set up a situation where that's available at both. So in other words, we can't say, oh, you know, Jeff wants to take this course through ISU, and Eric wants to take the same course through DMAC. No, it's either a DMAC course or it's an ISU course based upon this approval process.
So you just said that it's a perception that the rigor is different between DMAC and, or between DMAC and Iowa State?
I'm assuming that what the students were talking about last week was their perception. What I heard from them was they believed that Iowa State was a more rigorous opportunity as well, and it would be accepted by other schools, and that they had additional resources that they had access to. Having not taken Calculus II at neither DMAC nor Iowa State, I couldn't speak personally to the level of rigor at either place. But I, that was my interpretation of what they were saying last week, yes.
What's the cost difference to the district?
So for every DMAC course that is approved, it costs us $400 for a student to take, and depending upon how many credit hours and whether that's a CTE course or an academic course, we get us a certain amount of supplemental funding back for that. I don't know that I can tell you mathematically exactly, oh, yeah, in the end, we end up spending $130 or $170, or we make $30 on each course, because there's differences in the number of academic hours and the weighting of different things. I can tell you this, for every PSEO course taken during the academic year, it costs the district $250, and there is no supplemental funding that comes back to the district. So from a fiduciary standpoint, it may be more, there's more, there's more economic advantage to approving concurrent enrollment courses for a board than there is to approve courses for PSEO.
So you looked at the PSEO courses that had 10 or more requests. Is there, so if we were to so if we were to say, let's say Calc II, and it would not be on the list of concurrent enrollment, then it would have to be the PSEO, which would be presumably through Iowa State, so a student could not take it through DMAC.
That is correct.
Do you have, you looked at the 10 requests for PSEO, do you have a, a number on how many students that would not serve?
Rather than a number of students, what I could tell you is a percentage of courses. So I believe, so give me a little grace here. I've had a few rough days, and this was data that I got a little while ago. But I believe in talking with Nicole Patton, when she looked at the number, like when we looked at all the courses that had been requested, I should give credit where credit's due, when she looked at all the courses that have been requested since 2016 as PSEO courses, and then eliminated those from the list that had 10 or more, I believe she stated that that elimination was approximately 34% of the requests. So in other words, there's a good number of courses that have been requested as PSEO courses that are now being suggested to be concurrent enrollment courses.
If I might add on the financial, that, that weighting holds true for open enrolled in students as well. So if it's a concurrent enrollment class, the, the resident district counts that on their supplemental weighting and gets that money, and we bill them and they pay us on PSEO. We have to offer our open enrollment students everything our resident students get, but I mean, that's a given. But there is no exchange of money on that between the districts.
So a question that's financial, for those that I asked this question. So if we were to approve all of these courses as concurrent courses, would that likely then save the district money because fewer would be taken as PSEO courses? If there's 34% or so?
I believe I could answer in theory.
Yes, I mean, I, I'm not.
In theory, yes, it would. I don't know if Chris would want to speak to beyond theory, but theoretically, yes, there's a, there, it's a greater financial incentive to the district to identify a course as a concurrent enrollment course than as a PSEO course. And if it helps you, it's not only just a financial incentive, it is also the process that the state would really suggest we use.
Right.
Yeah, so for me, that's, it's an easy decision because the intent is for us to have the students take these courses through concurrent enrollment. And I don't think it's for us to judge or determine one is more rigorous than the other. If Iowa State says they're equivalent courses, they have experts there in those subject areas who have decided those are equivalent courses. So I don't think it's for us to say, we don't think they are, so we're gonna, you know. For me, I think it's an easy decision that we should have them be on the concurrent enrollment list.
Does Iowa State actually, though, say that Computer Science 230 Discrete Computation is equivalent rigor in Iowa State, or does it say it's transfer credit, or credit transfer?
It's not, wait. There, where are you seeing that one?
No, I'm just, I'm using.
Because that's not one that's offered through DMAC. I, I know more about this than.
Let me use a different one.
Hasn't said that they're comparable. Iowa State Computer Science has only approved one course for direct transfer in the Computer Science Department.
And I'm not using this as the. But like, I doubt Iowa State would really say, any course you could take at DMAC, or you could take at Iowa State, why would you ever take at Iowa State? It's not more rigorous. They're, they're just saying that the credits are transferable.
They're saying it's an equivalent course, because you get credit no matter what. But they're saying if you take this class, it is the equivalent of Math 166 at Iowa State.
But their marketing would say, we'd really like you to take an Iowa State.
They want your money, but, but they're saying they're equivalent courses.
And I, I wonder too, if we, you know, if we take classes, I worry about what you were asking. So the question of students too, it is cheaper to take classes at DMAC, so if we force the PSEO, then the students would have to pay more to take the credit at Iowa State, or no, they wouldn't pay more.
The students don't have to pay any.
Right, okay.
But my understanding, is there any, so let me ask this then. So let's just take Calc II. Are there any, is it more, are there any unforeseen challenges or challenges we can see, like transportation, that would make it more difficult for a student to take Calc II, we'll just pick Calc II at Iowa State rather than taking Calc II at DMAC? Because essentially, what we're saying right now is we're gonna select these 10 courses just based on enrollment in the past five years, and we're gonna say, well, no, you have to take them there. What are the barriers to students taking them at Iowa State rather than taking them at DMAC? Because that's essentially what we would be saying.
Sure, sure. I don't know that I can speak super intelligently to all those, but I'll try to summarize what I think I heard from the students last week. Before I do, I want to clarify one thing. I just made the comment, no, the students don't pay anything. The, the caveat is if taken during the academic school year. So students don't pay anything if taken during the year. Taken during the summer, it's a different story, and we can dig in that at another board meeting, or I would recommend we dig into that at another board meeting if we want. I believe last week, we heard the students list transportation as a potential barrier. They listed it more with DMAC than they did with ISU. They also talked about the transferability of credit. Again, they associated that more with DMAC than ISU. So, okay, so your question was, what would be more of a barrier at ISU for our students? So if we left it as a PSEO course, what are some of the unknown ripple effects for our students? I, I don't know that I have from my experience working as a former high school principal a, a, a good list to give you. Honestly, it's closer to our high school, so transportation is easier. It's typically transferable. Really, the ripple effects are more felt for the system than for the kid. And again, in both cases, the student is going to get college credit for that, as well as, and again, this is kind of why I think this is an important opportunity to expand. They're gonna get that college experience before they go onto a college campus, which research would tell us is gonna better prepare them to be successful in college. But I don't know that I could give you a good list of why is a student going to be disadvantaged by going to the university? I'm sorry, I'm not prepared to answer that very well.
Do you know offhand how many students in the past five years have done like Calc II?
I don't offhand. I know I have a spreadsheet that I could get to it.
Is it like 20? Is it 10? Is it 100? Because of financial impact, you know, if like, if it's 20, then maybe it's like six per year, so that's maybe $600 potentially difference? I'm trying to understand the financial impact of this.
Yes, so to clarify what we're voting on, because, so the recommendation now excluded those 10 courses, right? So what?
Well, the motion on the, so I am a little confused about that as well, Chris. So if the, if the list we have today is different than the list we had. Well, the motion on the, so I am a little confused about that as well, Chris. So if the, if the list we have today is different than the list we had last week.
Right.
What do we do with the motion?
Our motion has to.
Yeah, I'm not, the motion was on the original list, so I don't know that you can.
Unless we amend it.
You'd have to vote the original motion down and do a new motion.
Okay.
Who made the original motion?
Uh, Lisa Franzen.
And you seconded it.
Okay.
So the only last thing that I want to say, something that has been weighing on my mind since we heard the student speak last week, I have a concern about us as a board or a district saying that um, we think D Mac is inferior, or we think community college is inferior. Um, I'm really concerned about sending that message to our students because I think that's a, a path that a lot of our students are going to take. Um, and again, like I said, if, if Iowa State, if the regions are saying, regions, institutions are saying these courses are equivalent, I don't think it's for us to say we don't think that's good enough.
I, I agree. I mean, I, my instinct is to say to stick with what the intent of the policy is, to be consistent with the full initial list of courses. I, and I get what the students are saying and I, I've seen students take, you know, say, I take this class at D Mac because it was easier, but I if a student really needs, wants to take it at Iowa State, they could pay it for that out of their own pocket and do that or take it later. Um, do something else with, at D Mac with that time. So I.
My concern is not all students can do that. We're going to disadvantage some students because only certain students will be able to afford to pay to go to Iowa State.
Right, well, I just. They still get the credit at D Mac. It would still count. They would still have calc two checked off of their Iowa State transcript regardless of where they took it.
Director Franzen. One of my colleagues did remind me, uh, one disadvantage of allowing a course to remain a P S E O is that only juniors and seniors or those students, those underclassmen identified as talented and gifted would have access to it. So if I, again, go, to go back to that example, uh, Eric and I both, both want to take uh, calc two and I'm wanting to take it at D Mac, I could do that as a freshman because concurrent enrollment courses are open to all students, grades nine through twelve who qualify. P S E O, uh, if Eric wanted to take it that way, he'd either have to be a junior, a senior, or in the talented and gifted program. So that's one potential uh, barrier to P S E O uh, opportunity.
So you could potentially get more classes taken through the concurrent because you'd be able to start sooner.
From, from a logistical standpoint, and Chris, you tell me right away if I'm going down a pathway that's not productive for the board. Um, I simply took the list that I presented you last time with a hundred and forty-three courses on it, reviewed it, and updated it, uh, which took seven courses off of it based upon the information I shared earlier. Because I did that in Google, it wouldn't take me more than two or three minutes to uh, update that again back to the original list of a hundred and forty-three. But Chris, this is where I'm not sure if I'm operating within the procedures.
So the, the mo, the motion was made and moved last meeting and it was tabled to date certain today. So it was based on the list that was presented. So the motion that was taken off the table is based on the list that was presented at the last meeting. So they would have to have a new motion to accept your new list. So yes, it's nice that you could change that list back really quickly if they act on this motion, but they really can't act on your, your updated list right now until something happens with this motion.
So if we vote now, we're voting on the full list.
Yes.
Okay.
From last week.
Yep.
When do we review this again? Is it yearly?
It should be annually.
The board must um, approve the list of courses that are uh, contracted for concurrent enrollment. There is no timeline or process or approval process for P S E O courses. Those just have to align to the federal P S E O guidance. And they're approved at the building level, which was actually one of your questions. It was answered within here. Um, uh, if you need me to review it, I can, but um, but to directly answer your question, a year from, well, so the process that I'd like to get to is that each year, uh, as we did this fall, I bring you uh, handbooks and ask you to approve those handbooks. I'd like to get to the point where we do that in the spring. And in those handbooks, we'll have a list of contracted courses as well as the alternative measures for proficiency and a few other things that I want you to approve annually. And then every spring you'll, I'll be asking the board to approve those handbooks and that will be the ongoing process we use.
So the abbreviated question might be then, no matter what option we vote on, we could collect information over the next year such that when this comes back, we have more concrete answers on how it affects the students in the next year.
Doubt it out.
Have these changes.
Correct.
What percentage of our students are earning college credits overall in high school? Versus what percentage of students are not meeting our graduation requirements to graduate?
Uh, I think that'd be a great follow up.
I'm not exactly, my, my point being that we are in the business of making sure that children are educated to graduate from twelfth grade. Earning college credit is gravy. Right? And we're spending an awful lot of time deciding on something that is, is affecting students that are at the top of our list. And we're talking oftentimes about closing our performance gap. I think it's clear for me that the state has a preference that, that we support our kids getting college credit through a community college. And we have an incentive, a financial incentive to do so. So that's all I'm going to say.
I will say, um, this is with the hat of a former high school principal on. I was very pleased, uh, when oftentimes I could find that struggling kiddo who maybe didn't connect with what's going on at school, but maybe I could get them out to D Mac and into a welding program and all of a sudden things clicked, right? Sometimes kids come through those doors because they really want to be on the basketball team or a part of the band. Sometimes they come through those doors because they want to be a part of a certain programming. And so I, I personally have seen kids get connected to school and turn things around because of some of that uh, programming that we can provide.
I've seen it myself. For not overachieving students but underachieving students, it's a great, it's, it's wonderful that children can feel success when they may not be feeling it at the high school. So um, it's a win.
I think that's why we're spending time talking about, right? Because I, I, I would say, I don't agree that our responsibility ends at getting them through twelfth grade. I would say our responsibility is to help them reach their full personal and educational potential and whatever we need to do to help that. If that's D Mac for students in a different environment, if that's alternative learning environments, if that's um, university, if whatever, help everybody succeed, right? Yeah. I have a separate opinion offline about why the state did what they did and promotes this, um, having talked to some people from these entities, but that's separate.
Well, we have a motion on the table, um, moved by Franzen, seconded by Beerbomb to approve the courses recommended as contracted courses with D Mac for concurrent enrollment and to approve the measures recommended as alternative ways students can show proficiency to take these courses. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Passes six zero. Thanks for the discussion, everyone. All right, our next item is the twenty twenty-two A C S D S M C auctions agreement for community sale by auction of high school furniture.
I move the board approve the agreement with S M C auctions.
I second.
Moved by Franzen, seconded by Beerbomb. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Passes six zero. Next item is the former Ames High School asbestos abatement bid issuance.
I move the board approve plans and specifications, form of contract, notice to bidders, advertisement to bid and estimated total cost for asbestos abatement, former Ames High School.
Second.
Moved by Beerbomb, seconded by Franzen. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Passes six zero. A C S D C O A interconnection agreement?
No.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the second motion.
I move the board set the date of public hearing on July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two and direct the board secretary to publish the notice no sooner than June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Moved by Beerbomb, seconded by Franzen. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Passes six zero. Now that A C S D C O A interconnection agreement for a net metered renewable energy generation facility, five hundred K V A and smaller.
I move the board approve the interconnection agreement for a net meter renewable energy generation facility, five hundred K V A and smaller with the city of Ames electrical, electric services.
Second.
Moved by Franzen, seconded by Winfrey. Discussion?
I didn't move it.
Oh, Beerbomb! I even wrote down Beerbomb! Moved by Beerbomb, seconded by Winfrey. Um, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Passes six zero. Items from the board. Um, I did not note any requests for staff this evening that I missed anything.
I, I wrote down. Um, so I'm just double checking. I wrote down what is the percentage of students that enroll in joint enrollment programming versus the percentage of students that do not graduate? Is that a question you'd like follow up on?
No, I think it was just a, um.
Okay, I just wanted to be thorough. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Hawkins. Okay. Well, I did want to take a moment to acknowledge the two Iowa State students, Vivian Flores and Eden Montag, who were tragically killed by a gunman at Cornerstone Church on Thursday evening. As well as the nineteen students and two teachers who were killed by a gunman at Robb Elementary in Olvade, Texas on May twenty-fourth. Um, I think I can speak for everyone here when I say that our hearts are with the families and friends of the victims, the Cornerstone Church community, the Olvade community, and all those whose lives have been impacted by these events.
I have one item from um, board. I just wanted to uh, tell the community to, you know, be on the lookout. Our new superintendent in waiting, Dr. Julius Lawson is in town and around. If you pay attention, you might see him. Say hello, welcome him to Ames. Um, he's a great guy. Go up and talk to him. So, welcome to Julius.
I would, um, I had the opportunity as a parent last week to go to the uh, Tuesday night to the promotion ceremony for the eighth graders. And I just want to commend uh, Principal Michael, uh, Tanya Goodwin. I know there were other members of the committee that planned it, but what a phenomenal celebration for our students and to do it in the um, at the high school stadium, uh, and just what that represents for those students. There was just a lot of pride in those students. The student speakers did a, or if you sit and listen to those kids, um, I hope every one of our educators feels so good about the message those kids delivered and clearly the experience they are having. And I think that's really representative of um, what those kids at the middle school have experienced. So I was just really proud to uh, obviously be there as a parent, but also to be there as a board member.
And I was going to share a similar message about commencement. We all had the opportunity to um, participate in the commencement ceremony last weekend, which was such an honor and always such a fun part of being a board member. And it's even more fun when you get to hand your own kid their diploma. Um, so that was really a lot of fun and thank you all for all the work in putting that on. That is a huge event um, for all of our staff to, to navigate. And I know it meant a lot for the students, even my own daughter was like, I don't know if I really want to go. I was like, you have to go. I get to hand you your diploma. So um, and she thought it was wonderful. She was really, really happy that she went. So.
I was very happy I went as well. I wasn't, after having, you know, I was like, oh, I just said, but I was, it was just so great. It was one of my favorite things I've got to do as a board member.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. It's a highlight. Any other items from the board? Items from the superintendent?
Sure. Well, you certainly have commented on some of the notes that I had here. Just want to congratulate the entire school district and families and students and especially our staff on concluding this school year. Uh, we know that it's been filled with uh, exciting celebrations and also challenges. But it's always good to be looking forward to how we build on those to make improvements for the coming school year. And it is so great to be in that transition time with Dr. Lawson. Um, and I share your enthusiasm and encourage people to get acquainted. I think that they will uh, appreciate the leadership that is coming. The only other item that I have is, um, it's that time of year. I A S B is already asking for your legislative priorities for next year, so we probably will get a process, if not in your next June board meeting, maybe in your early July board meetings, we'll be thinking about those items.
Thank you. All right. And then our board planning calendar. Our next meeting will be on June twentieth. Um, it's currently scheduled at six thirty P M, but depending on our discussion tonight, we uh, could end up adding a work session if I'm, if I'm correct. So um, stay tuned for that, but otherwise, June twentieth will be the next meeting. Other comments on the board planning calendar? All right, then we will take a five minute break and then we will enter our work session. Um, and for those of you watching us remotely, we will end our broadcast.